Vice Chair Alex Wong is with us, Jason Winston is with us, and Marcy Collier Overstreet is with us. So we do constitute a quorum. Other members will be coming in here shortly, I'm sure. And Ms. Bakteri is here by phone. So that makes five. So having called the meeting to order and introducing the members, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Second by Overstreet. Let's open that vote. The vote is open?
Voice vote on the motion to approve the agenda? That was an aye. Can you say it again, please?
There'll be five ayes and zero nays. Right, the agenda has been adopted as written. I will move to approve the Minister's power meeting. Second by Wong. Let's open that vote.
And Bakteri's vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Would all members please vote? Marcy? Overstreet, aye. Five ayes, zero nays. All right, thank you. That leaves, that takes us to discussion and hopefully adoption of the dreaded 2025 Finance Committee Goals and Objectives. Before you, you have a printed copy of the latest iteration. Any questions, comments, motion? Motion to approve by Wong, which I will second. Any discussion on adopting the 25 goals and objectives? Seeing none, let's open the vote, please.
Bakteri's vote?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it so ordered. That takes us to public comment. We do have a speaker, former Chief of Staff Greg Pritchett.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Afternoon.
Members of the Finance Executive Committee. It is always great to come back to this institution and this room, the Marvin Arrington Facility. Thank you all very much. There's a piece of legislation that's on the Finance Committee Agenda today. It's 25-0-11-01. And I understand that there are some concerns that have been put forth. And I know that you're not really prepared to take action on it today. But I hope between now and the next meeting that I will be able to address those concerns. And hopefully, they will meet your approval and we can move forward. But thank you so much for considering the legislation at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I appreciate your patience. This was discussed during the briefing a couple of days ago. And it, what came out of that discussion apparently was the need for you and a member of the Law Department to get together for some, for some dialogue. So hopefully, we can do that and get this off our plate.
I'll do it, I'll do it quickly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, under Presentations and Reports, we have two. The first one, the Department of Finance FY25 Quarterly Report. They will present. And then, secondly, you all have hard copies of the COVID-19 Funds Report. And that is in the form of a handout only today. So Department of Finance, if you're ready, take it away. And I want to thank the Department of Finance for, as they always do, blocking out the time to reach out and discuss this in advance with all the members of the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Shook Mohammed Bala, CFO. Just wanted to give an update on the second quarter report. This is through the period ending December 2024. Shaun will be going through and giving the updates as well as an update from Chief Davis on revenue. And Courtney will give the update on our debt and investment portfolio. As everybody's aware, in FY25 First Quarter Report, we showed a deficit going into this year. I want to thank council for the mid-year budget adjustment that allowed us to utilize fund balance to address some of the budgetary pressures that are in FY25. Halfway through the year, we're working really, really hard on both sides, on both the revenue side and the expense side, to make sure that we land at the end of the year in a much better place. So having said that, I'll take it over to Chief Davis to take us through the quarterly. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, CFO Bala. Good afternoon, Chairman Wong, members of the council. So today, we will present to you our second quarter financial status report, which covers the period of July through December of 2024, our actuals with our projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. Any significant pieces of legislation or anticipated changes, we have tried to incorporate as well. And although this report covers activity through December, the month of January has closed. And as a result of that, we have used some of that information to form some of the projections as well. We'll jump right into our highlights, giving you a summary overview of our revenues and expenses. Revenues are projected, and they are outperforming the budget in several categories, including our property tax and local option sales tax. We're benefiting from a favorable rate environment. In addition to that, what we are seeing on the revenue side through a number of these accounts are what we consider are in good standing at this particular point in time. We're also gaining some efficiencies. And some of those efficiencies, we will talk about a little bit later in more detail when we look at the revenue projection slide itself. However, on the expense side of the house, personnel continues to be our pressure point. Public safety expenditures continue to dominate the overruns that we expect at year-end, primarily within personnel. I just want to echo what CFO Bala indicated. We are grateful for the mid-year budget amendment that was approved. It did allocate $30 million from fund balance to address a number of our one-time items, as well as some things that were unanticipated and unbudgeted for. Now, although that was approved, it did increase our funded budget from $859 million to $889 million. With that being said, just wanted to quickly just walk you through our Q2. Revenues are projected to end the year with a surplus of $77.9 million, or 8.8% of the operating revenue budget, while expenses are projected to end the year with a deficit of $97.9 million. Now, this nets to a year-end deficit of up to $20 million. And we say up to $20 million because in large part, that would be determined by a number of factors and a few things that we are doing in-house. Some of those include the relaunch of our vacancy review board. That is a budgetary control measure that is underway to ensure that our personnel aligns with mission-critical needs, budgetary reductions and controls on departmental encumbrances. We're limiting discretionary funding, as well as looking into one-time revenue options that are anticipated from other sources. With that, that concludes our summary. And at this time, I will turn it over to Chief Davis to dive into our revenue projections.
Thank you, Shaun. Good afternoon, council members. Lawrence Davis Jr., Revenue Chief for the Office of Revenue. I come before you this afternoon to present to you the revenue performance, as well as the proposed, currently proposed year-end projections for FY25. As you can see on the chart that's before you, the funded budget is total is at $889.6 million. This does include roughly around $5.8 million from the transfer funds and from the mid-year adjustment, $30 million. Excluding the transfers funds, as well as the mid-year adjustment, the operating budget came in at $853.8 million. As of the second quarter, our total revenue stands at $560.5 million. This does represent 63% of the total budget and 65.7% of the operating budget. Our year-end projection for the remaining six months is estimated at additional $371.2 million, which leads us to a year-end forecast currently of $931.8 million. As indicated by Shaun, this gives us a surplus of seven, roughly around $78 million. Our six key revenue drivers that you see on the screen before you, starting with property tax, which is our largest revenue source. It's roughly around 37% of our revenue source. It is projected to exceed the budget by $15.2 million. And this is due to the rising property values in Fulton County and DeKalb County. The public utilities, alcoholic beverage, and other taxes are expected to exceed the budget by $6.4 million. This is driven by high increase in alcohol sales from major sporting events that have come before the city within the month of December and the month of January, with the estimated numbers of matches that will be coming in June of this year for the FIFA Club World Cup. Our local option sales tax is also going to see a surplus of the budget of $11.9 million. And this is basically influenced by the inflation rates that we are seeing, the prices increase and continued spending from consumers, as well as the large sporting events that the city will be hosting. In the category of license and permits, we are forecasting that this will exceed by $3.6 million. And this is due to our enhanced collection efforts and just revenue growth that we're seeing in the operation, in the occupational and excise tax area. As it relates to other revenues, this category is set to exceed the budget by $26.7 million. This is due, as Shaun alluded to earlier, higher investment earnings, as well as one-time contributions that we have in that area, in that general category. Our hotel motel tax will also exceed the budget by $6.1 million. And this is due to the newly developed hotels that we're seeing within the city's limits, as well as increase in travel related to tourism and the major sporting events that the city is hosting. Overall, the FY25 revenue are expected to exceed the operating budget, as stated, of $78 million. And this does reflect the strong revenue performance. The Office of Revenue, as always, will continue to monitor the economic conditions, especially potential impacts that we are seeing now from the new presidential administration. And we will take those into consideration to redefine our projections and move towards, as we move towards the third quarter and final. I will now turn it back over to Shaun Gabriel to give the expense reports.
Thank you, Lawrence. So we're going to look at expenses, first by major category, and then by department. So as of the second quarter, expenses are projected to reach $987 million. This does reflect the $97 million variance from the funded budget amount of $889 million. I do want to point out that this is an optimistic picture. And I say optimistic from the mere point that the projections reflect the reclassification of some expenses to some appropriate funds, such as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and some capital funds. So in personnel costs, the year-end projected amount of $623 million accounts for reclass activity. Without that reclass activity, we'll be looking at a much higher number of $645 million of year-end projected expenses in personnel and employee benefits. Personnel accounts for about 85% of the overall year-end variance. Now, this is a telling story. I think it is a testament of our organizational growth. And as you can see in the notes section that's off to the right, that is not only driving our salaries, but our benefit costs as well. Overtime has a cost containment component in there. I want to make sure that that is iterated. The $10.6 million projected overrun that you do see does have a cost containment measure. We have been meeting with a number of departments. And one of the key contributors to the overtime overrun is APD. But APD has set overtime targets across all of their organizational units. When we look at the operating categories, the variance that you do see are primarily reflect the commitment that we have made in public safety, including a number of the investments we have done with vehicles, security systems, and tactical gear for our police officers. While inter-fund, inter-departmental charges are expected to go over budget by $5.7 million, and that's primarily due to repair and maintenance costs, not so much driven by fuel costs, but repair and maintenance, particularly for our public safety departments. The next slide, which I just want to briefly touch upon, is by department. This is the same information at the category level. But here, we're just detailing it out by general fund department. We have highlighted the top five departments that are contributing to the overrun, with public safety accounting for about 70%. Outside of public safety, highlighted also is the Department of Parks and Recreation and ADID, Department of Transportation. I think the key theme that we see here is that the impact of personnel across all of our city departments. Council members, the next slide that I just wanted to briefly go over is our enterprise fund slide here. We take a look at the performance of our enterprise funds, primarily aviation, water, wastewater, and solid waste. At this particular point in time, all three funds are currently performing in a favorable position. But of course, these figures will continue to be refined as the fiscal year progresses. I do want to point out just a couple of items just real quickly. Within aviation, the variance that you do see in revenues is primarily attributed to a CARES credit. It represents an agreed-upon portion of the shared cost that is due to the airlines. When you look at water and wastewater, it's performing well both on the revenue side, as well as the expense side. We do know that the expenses, and when you look at the contractual services to date, we know that that is largely due to some savings and service contracts. Those contracts are used to purchase plant, is for plant maintenance and to purchase chemicals. And we do know that that will be procured and utilized as necessary based on the nature of the 24/7 operation. When it comes to solid waste services, the revenues are projected to exceed the budget by $4.5 million, which is attributed to, in large part, due to the solid waste fee and rate structure changes that we have currently, that were currently underway and implemented. While on the expense side of the house, solid waste is definitely looking at a slight overrun. And that is due primarily to personnel costs. And if we could just make a blanket statement, especially when it pertains to the enterprise funds, especially when we undertake citywide compensation investments, those costs absorb within those particular operations directly, unlike what we have done with the mid-year, with the class and compensation study, where that was a budget item. And then, as part of the mid-year, that was allocated to the departments out of non-departmental. At this time, council members, I will now turn over the presentation to Mr. Courtney Knight, who will talk a little bit about debt and investments.
Good afternoon, Chairman Shook, members of the Finance Executive Committee. I'm Courtney Knight, Chief of Treasury Debt and Investments. We're going to talk about our debt portfolio initially. The city has approximately $7.3 billion of debt outstanding. That debt covers not only the general fund and general obligation bonds, but also TADS, the Department of Aviation, and the Department of Watershed Management. Approximately 50% of that $7.3 billion is attributable to the Department of Aviation, approximately 35% to Watershed, and the rest is allocated across GOs, general fund, and TADS. One of the things we do in addition to issuing debt is administering it on an ongoing basis, looking for opportunities to save on interest costs by refunding and restructuring outstanding debt. During this past quarter, we achieved $30 million of saving in the watershed portfolio and approximately $4 million of savings for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Turning now to our investment portfolio, where in the last quarter, we had just over $2 billion of cash. That cash is invested pursuant to state law and our own internal investment policies. 44%, about 45% of the debt was invested in Georgia Fund I, which is a government pool administered by the State Treasurer's Office. Approximately 25% was invested in U.S. Agency Securities, 15% in U.S. Treasury Securities, and about 14% in other municipal bonds. During the period, we were, we achieved a fairly attractive yield on our portfolio of just over 4.5%. We continue to monitor investment opportunities and developments in the economy, which have an impact on our investment returns. And lastly, I'll talk just a moment about our ratings. In the Treasury Department, we are in constant contact with the rating agencies, looking for opportunities to upgrade our debt. We had the success of achieving the first AAA rating by Fitch during the last quarter. And we are continuing to talk with the rating agencies about potential opportunities to upgrade our ratings in the water and wastewater bonds and at the airport as well. I'll conclude my remarks and turn it back over to CFO Bala, should we have any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? I've got a couple. Oh, Ms. Overstreet, go ahead. And we've been joined by Mr. Dustin Hills.
Well, as always, I want to make sure that we acknowledge all of the work that went into what we just went through, the presentation. So thank you to the entire finance team for all of the work that you've done on bringing us this vital information. I do know that, you know, many will, will not completely understand the budget as we just saw. I totally do. I understand it. And I will continue to support all of your efforts. I am very proud of the work that we're doing here at the city. And I think that this reflects things that really are important to us and us doing it in a big way. And it also shows that, that we're nimble, right? We, we know how to adjust to things as they happen. And I am really proud of the work that you all are doing. So thank you very much for always bringing us this information ahead of time so that we have time to digest it and truly understand and ask the important questions. Like any red item, we want to know where and why. And I didn't see one that I would change. So thank you for always explaining and just being here and doing the work that you do.
I've got a couple of questions. So it was mentioned that, you know, you've got an agreement from APD to somehow trim or cap overtime?
Correct.
Well, I mean, we're not going to bring hundreds more people on board. So how are they going to do that with the existing manpower they have?
So one of the biggest drivers for overtime in the first half of the year was additional staff that was needed at the public safety training facility. There was a lot of overtime over the summer that groundbreaking happened this fall. So a lot of those resources have been brought back in-house. And now that there's operational neat usage of the facility, it does not require the 24/7 security that was, was needed before. So that happens. Chief Sherbaum has been very strategic about the excess utilization of overtime through the back end of the year. We were very active in the first half of the year. We had presidential elections. We had a passing of a former president. We had weather and ice events and a lot of other things that just accumulated in a, in a short span of time of the year. Between now and June, the police chief does feel like he has the resources he needs without utilizing as much overtime as, as they needed in the first half of the year. So we appreciate their efforts there.
Okay, thank you. Does our hotel motel revenue now exceed pre-pandemic? Or have we yet to come all the way back?
Yeah, it's now, I think last year, we broke the pre-pandemic level. So it's actually exceeding pre-pandemic level. We would have been fortunate enough to add four new hotels, six new hotels, over the last fiscal year.
Okay, excellent. I appreciated the mayor's mentioning of our AAA rating last night, three times by my count. So my question is, and I asked it during the briefing call, what makes Fitch so much smarter than the other ratings agencies?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty smart. It's, you know, every rating agency has its own approach and its own formulas into assessing a creditworthiness of a city. And a creditworthiness of a city real is a testament to everybody's involvement in the city. Because it looks at educational attainment. It looks at job growth and job opportunities. It looks at safety. It looks at livability. And it projects out for the next decade how they perceive a city is going to do. So it's really a testament to what everybody's doing to make Atlanta one of the best places to live in, in the country.
All right, thank you. We've been joined by Mr. Byron Amos. So y'all are to be commended. The, the budget deficit gap has been steadily shrinking. And I assume, but you will tell me, that the vacancy review apparatus has played a role in that. And we know you have a vacancy review process, but we've never asked you to, you know, briefly kind of describe how it works and what the outcomes have been in terms of what the departments want and what the response is.
No, absolutely. Definitely want to acknowledge all the hard work that's being put forth by the administration. And CO works in convening the vacancy review board. And it's, it really makes every hiring decision more heightened and scrutinized. So it needs to come back in front of the vacancy review board with a business case justification of why a position needs to be re-advertised and refilled. The commissioners do a good job of going internally first to see how they can restructure and enhance their operations without necessarily having to add more capacity to the system.
All right, and that's all I had. Mr. Hills?
Thank you, Chairman Shook and CFO Bala, and your team for the presentation. I just had a discussion about this. And you mentioned the hotel motel tax. There's currently, I guess, a workaround that a lot of large companies take advantage of. And that's the, you only get the hotel motel tax for the first 30 days. So large companies, I'm not going to, you know, name examples or whatever, are booking hotel rooms instead of, you know, each little time they need one, they book them for, you know, 90-plus days. And with large events coming up, that is something that, you know, FIFA or the NFL, et cetera, would do. And so that would leave a large revenue stream that we would not get. And I believe there is a bill in the House right now, in Ways and Means, hasn't made it out of committee yet, that would close that funding gap. Are you aware of what I'm speaking about and that House bill? And I just want to make sure this is on the city's radar and that our lobbyist is lobbying to move that bill forward that would close that funding gap for these, you know, these large companies booking these very, very long stays to avoid that hotel motel tax.
Councilmember, thank you for bringing that to our attention in more detail. We are going to familiarize ourselves a little bit more with that. Not necessarily sure what the impact has been or how long this has been going on. But we'll work with the lobbying team and we'll make sure that, that it's addressed.
Thanks so much. That's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? All right, Mr. Bala, thank you to you and your crack team, the equivalent of the 1927 Yankees. So we thank you. That takes us to our consent agenda. Now, Mr. Evans, could you sound our two first reads?
Item number one is 2501115, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to correct ordinance number 2201831, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on November 21, 2022, and approved by the mayor on November 22, 2022, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Ultimate Bodies by Carlos, Inc., for lease of commercial space with the property located at 1529 Piedmont Avenue, Northeast, Suite L, to recognize the correct legal name of the lessee, deleting the old name Ultimate Bodies by Carlos, Inc., as lessee and inserting UBBC LLC as the lessee, to ratify all terms and conditions of the lease agreement as amended without change or modification of such terms and for other purposes. Item number two is 2501116, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue a task order pursuant to Resolution 23R 3770 for the contract number listed here, job order contracting services, small with Beatty Construction to add additional funding for Atlanta City Hall repairs and renovations on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed $543,307.37. All work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you, and we will take those up in our next sitting. That takes us to ordinances for second reading, first of which is 2501081, and I will make a motion to bring forward a substitute. Second by Juan, let's open that procedural vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, it'll be seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, let me read the caption of the substitute, which is now before us. This is 2501081, an ordinance by Finance Exec, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute Amendment Number Five for the agreement, the FC, which is indicated here, citywide, office printer MFTS supplies and services with Xerox on behalf of AIM to add funding to the agreement for a 90-day extension and to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in the listed code section, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, to extend the term of the agreement effective April 1 of this year through June 30 of this year in an amount not to exceed $821,284. All contracted work being charged to and paid from, et cetera. The nature of the substitute is it updates Section Two with the needed FDOA data? Any questions or comments? I'll move approval. Second by Mr. Juan. If there's something else, let's open that vote.
Vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion to approve on substitute. Oh, we just did that.
That was it.
I'm a little spooked here because I didn't know Mr. Juan was a rent troll-quest until today. All right, that takes us to 2501082, ordinance by Finance Exec, authorizing mayor or his designee to enter the First Amendment to the agreement, which is listed here, first in turnout timers with WestNet LLC, to add Atlanta Fire Rescue as an authorized user, and to add funding on behalf of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed All contract work be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Commissioner, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and other members of the council. My name is Chris Davis, the Commissioner for the Department of Enterprise Asset Management. Purpose for this legislation, this amendment, is to add fire to this existing contract as relates to being able to provide the much-needed maintenance on the WestNet service system that's required in each one of the fire stations.
Motion to approve by Juan, which I will second. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, I believe the motion will be to hold the next two papers, so let me read both captions. We'll take them together. 2501096 is an ordinance by Mr. Amos to ratify, reaffirm, supplement, and amend that certain master bond ordinance adopted March 31 of 1999 is previously supplemented and amended to provide for the issuance by the City of Atlanta of its water and wastewater subordinate lien revenue refunding bonds, Series 2025, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed blank, to refund or tender for purchase all or a portion of the city's outstanding bonds, Series 2015, and the city's outstanding water and wastewater revenue bonds, Series 2020, and the city's outstanding blank. Collectively, the refunded bonds to authorize the preparation and distribution of an invitation or offer to tender bonds and related disclosure documents and the execution and delivery of a dealer management agreement and tender purchase or and tender agent agreement in connection with the tender for purchase of the refunded bonds to authorize the preparation and use of a preliminary official statement, an official statement in connection with the offering or sale of the Series 2025 bonds, to supersede and waive all resolutions and ordinances or parts of resolutions and ordinances that conflict with the provisions of this ordinance and for other related purposes. 2501101 is an ordinance by Boone, Backtiari, Dozier, Overstreet, Bond, Amos, and Lewis to waive the code section listed here, to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute a broker of record agreement with Greg Pridgen, doing business as Solutions 58, Inc., as part of a co-op agreement, which is listed here, with Purchase Power LLC, utilizing the Georgia Department of Administrative Services contract, number listed here, on behalf of Department of HR at no cost of city and for other purposes. The motion is to hold both of those items. Second by Juan. If there's no questions, let's hold that vote.
Vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, that takes us to Items Seven and Eight, which we will take together. 2501108 is an ordinance by Mr. Juan and Mr. Wes Moreland, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $5,000 to the Morningside Lenox Park Association pursuant to the section of the charter written here and for other purposes. 250109 is an ordinance by Mr. Wes Moreland, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $3,000 to Propel ATL pursuant to the same section of the city charter. Motion to approve by Juan, which I will second for Items Seven and Eight.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Under resolutions, 25R 3156, this is a resolution by Ms. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute special procurement agreement, which is listed here, with Urban Forest Carbon Registry, doing business as City Forest Credits, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience pursuant to the code section listed here, for a term of 40 years in an amount not to exceed $232,908, to expand the City of Atlanta's carbon credit program. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis.
Oh. Excuse me. It was communicated this item was to be held. We went through this on the...
Yeah, that's correct. All right. Motion to hold has been withdrawn as has the second. I'll make a motion to hold. Second by Juan, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
And that vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, item is held. 25R 3157 is a resolution by Ms. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise the first renewal option for the SB printed here, Revenue Recovery Services with Utility Revenue Management Company, Inc., on behalf of DOF for a term of one year, effective March 13 of this year through March 12 of next, and for other purposes. Mr. Wink.
Good afternoon, Chairman Shook and council members. I'm Jonathan Williams, Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Financial Administration, Department of Watershed Management. The purpose of this legislation is to exercise our first-year option to renew our existing contract with Utility Revenue Management, or URM, that expires March 2025. The scope of work provides for the vendor to audit commercial, industrial, and multifamily meter accounts and conduct field investigative services to maximize the collection of valuable revenues. In orders of magnitude, there are roughly 13,000 commercial accounts, 75 industrial, and 7,200 multifamily accounts for a total of roughly 20,000 that would fall under the guidelines of this contract. URS has spent the time since original contract conception to conduct field work that will support future revenue recognition and claims for their share of this collection. We're seeking your support in extending this contract as written. This concludes my talking points. None of any questions you may have.
Yeah, could you remind us as to how this is formatted and how they've been doing?
How they've been doing?
Yeah.
Well, they spent the first year actually out doing audits with 20,000 meters to go look at. They're trying to get a feel for how accurate our billing is out in the field before we press forward. After that, they'll come back to us, we'll compare it against our records, and on that basis, we'll pursue the remaining amount that's open to us.
Questions or comments? Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis. If there's something else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
I just have it so ordered. 25R 3159 is a resolution by Shook, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute renewal number one for the co-op agreement number, which is listed here, with Purchasing Power, LLC, utilizing the Georgia Department of Admin Services contract, which is listed, on behalf of HR, for a term not to exceed 12 months with one, one-year renewal option remaining in an amount not to exceed $0.00 to provide a voluntary employee purchase program to eligible employees for the purchase of consumer goods and services via payroll deductions and for other purposes. Let's have a presentation then, or do you want to just get right to your question? Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Shook and council members. I'm Kimberly Finley, Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Human Resources. The Department of Human Resources is requesting their approval for the first renewal with Purchasing Power, which is a voluntary employee benefit program that allows our workforce to access goods and services, such as computers, tires, jewelry, and appliances, without the need for borrowing money or using credit cards. This employee benefit entirely is entirely voluntary and involves no credit checks, aligning with our commitments to financial empowerment to our employees. The cooperative agreement leverages the state's contract with Purchasing Power, LLC, and involves purchasing power working closely with our HR and finance departments. Resolution 23R 4446 authorized the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement for an initial term of one year with two one-year renewal options, with this request being the first renewal. Now, since the launch of Purchasing Power in March of 2024, 1,242 City of Atlanta employees have registered for Purchasing Power, and 552 total orders have been placed since the launch. It's important to note that there is a salary cap in place for employees ensuring responsible use of this benefit. Other reputable entities, including the State of Georgia, Grady Hospital, and MARTA, already utilized Purchasing Power successfully. Lastly, there is zero cost to the City of Atlanta for implementing Purchasing Power, and I believe we have a couple of representatives here from Purchasing Power to present, present in the audience today who can address any questions or concerns that you may have. This initiative represents a positive step towards supporting the financial well-being of our employees, and I urge your favorable consideration of this legislation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Juan. All right, question's been asked and answered. Does anyone else have anything? Motion by Juan to approve, which I will second. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Vote is closed.
Yes, I have it. 25R 3197 is a resolution by Finance Exec, authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise the second renewal option for the SB indicated, Connectwise Licenses with Insight Public Sector, Inc., on behalf of AIM, for a term of one year, effective April 8 of this year through April 7 of next, in an amount not to exceed $103,950. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. And motion to approve by Juan. I'll second it. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Aye.
And the vote is closed. Seven yeas, zero nays.
The eyes have it. 25R 3198 requires a substitute, so I'll move to bring the substitute before us, second by Juan. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
All right. Substitute caption reads as follows. Substitute Resolution by Finance Exec, authorizing the mayor or his designee to exercise the second renewal option for the SSP indicated, Milner Technology Maintenance and Services with Milner Technologies, Inc., on behalf of Department of AIM, the Department of Finance, and APD, for a term of one year, effective April 1 of this through March 31 of next year, in an amount not to exceed $242,243. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Questions or comments? Motion to approve on substitute by Juan, which I will second. If there's something else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
And the vote is closed.
All right, item's approved on substitute. 25R 3199 is a resolution by Finance Exec, authorizing the mayor to execute special procurement agreement, SP, which is indicated here, Microsoft Dynamics CRM Support and Professional Services with Innovative Architects LLC, doing business as Improving Atlanta, on behalf of the Department of AIM, pursuant to the section of the code listed here, for a term of five years with one renewal option, one one-year renewal option in amount not to exceed $566,100. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the accounts listed and for other Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
The vote is closed. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. 25R 3200 is a resolution by Finance Exec, authorizing the CFO to write off Department of Aviation outstanding accounts receivable in the amount of $2,884,463.01, where it has been determined that such accounts are uncollectible and for other purposes. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman and member of the council. My name is Tam Lee with Department of Aviation Finance, and this is the request to write off for USPS property tax from 2006 to 2010, and we have exhausted all legal consultation and I quote that because USPS has no taxable interest in either the land or the improvements, a claim for recoupment would likely fail. So we are requesting this write-off.
Questions or comments? Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The eyes have it so ordered. 25R 3201 is a resolution by Finance Exec, supplementing a joint Exec supplementing a joint task order fund in amount not to exceed $9.5 million for use under three miscellaneous repairs and construction services contracts, the project numbers and users indicated here to provide for ADA and other improvements on behalf of Parks and Rec. On a task order basis, all services will be charged to and paid from the funding sources listed here. And is Mr. Voss here? Or someone else?
Voss is not here, but Keith Hicks is here, the Department of Parks and Recreation. The City of Atlanta through the Department of Parks and Recreation is committed to maintaining and improving public spaces to ensure accessibility and quality recreational experiences for all residents and visitors. DPR has identified necessary repairs and construction projects to bring park facilities into compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, ADA, and implement other needed upgrades. The City Council previously approved funding for Project RFPC 1210319 under resolutions numbers 22R4778 and 23R3811. Additional funding is required to expand the scope of these improvement projects to better serve the community. The city has contracts in place with Kispur Parker Frye, Litti Commercial Construction, Inc., and SoCo Contracting Company, Inc. These contractors have been tasked with executing ADA compliant work and other park improvements through task orders under the existing contracts. The legislation authorizes a funding supplement of up to $9.5 million to continue and expand these efforts. Task orders will be assigned under existing contracts ensuring efficiency and continuity in project expectations. The funding will increase accessibility, safety, and overall park conditions, reinforcing the city's dedication to inclusive public spaces. Investing in these investments enhances recreational opportunities and quality of life for all residents and visitors. I ask for your support in approving this resolution, hence moving Atlanta forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman Shook. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Is there a list that can be provided for all of these ADA improvement projects?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I can trust that you will give us that list by the meeting on Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, since I have your agreement, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a question about, you know, our need to cure ADA deficiencies. So in the current bond issue, the projects of which we're trying to, you know, push out, there was money set aside to cure previously identified ADA deficiencies, and there was money, as I recall, set aside in the prior bond issue for the same use. But I think since adoption of the most recent one, I believe we, the city got hit with a new consent order that I may have identified previously unidentified ADA problems that need to be rectified. So I guess my question is, all right, is bond money going to be directed as we set aside for to pay for some or all of these ADA issues that have been identified in this paper?
Well, in the current bond, there was $5 million allocated to ADA improvements, and quite honestly, we really need to have probably twice that or even three times.
It was only $5 million?
Only $5 million, yes.
Has that money been spent already?
We are spending it down as we speak. I would say three-quarters of it has been spent, and we still have projects that we, you know, need to tackle.
Well, no question about that. Mr. Hillis.
I'll revise my request. Can you provide the list of what this money is going to, itemized list of the locations, and then also to Councilmember Shook's point, what has already been done? So also include what is either completed or in progress as well that may not, that may be outside of this spend, but include those as well, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So is your approval motion now conditional?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Don't disappoint us. All right, let's open the vote. The vote is open.
Back to you, Ari.
Aye.
The eyes have it. 25R3202 is a resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor or his designated to issue task order number seven for the contract RFP indicated citywide A and E Engineering and Construction Phase Services with Harris and Smith LLC for construction and administrative design services at Fire Station 22 on behalf of DEAAM in an amount not to exceed $85,400 or $243, rather. All work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed and for other purposes. Motion to approve by Juan, which I will second. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Davis, let's open the vote. The vote is open.
Is this for work that's already been completed, or is this for the slide deficiency we spoke about?
Yes, so this was the, this was the addition to be able to provide the incomplete construction services, construction administration services for the design team when the project had gotten extended. And so we did have some funding in here to include the additional things that we're looking at that we need to do there.
Including the slide that we spoke about?
Yeah. So there's some of the costs up in there, so there's a few unknowns, but we're hoping that everything gets covered here. If not, then it'll be a smaller piece that'll come after this.
Understood. Thank you.
Back to you, Ari.
Aye.
Vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, and then on to the walk-in section of the agenda, and we have two similar papers, the first of which is a resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor or his designated to issue a task order number 10 for the contract RFP indicated citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction phase services with Harris Smith LLC for construction administrative, administration design services for Fire Station 29-EMS on behalf of DEAM in an amount not to exceed $596,725. All work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed and for other purposes. Commissioner.
Again, good afternoon, Chris Davis, Commissioner for the Department of Enterprise Asset Management. The purpose of this legislation is to authorize the agreement with Harrison Spitt for the design and construction services for EMS, for the new EMS slash 29 Fire Station.
Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote. The vote is open.
Oh, sorry.
The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, and before we move on to our last paper, let me say at this point, this is something I've worked on for about 15 years. It's going to solve the city's largest coverage gap, and I've worked with Ms. Hyde and Ms. Adrian and Mr. Metzkeid. We've lobbied the last three mayors to make this happen, and my thanks to this mayor for being the one who's done the blocking and tackling to get this across the finish line. Hopefully I will be around to see it. But thank you for your efforts, and please let me know what I can do to help advance the ball here.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, and our last paper is very similar in nature. This is a resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor or his designated to issue task order, number of which is indicated here, for RFP indicated job order contracting services large with Manhattan RFP JV for the design and construction of Fire Station 25 on behalf of Department of Enterprise Asset Management in amount not to exceed $11,284,168.35. All work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Commissioner.
Again, good afternoon. The purpose of this legislation is to enter to contract with Manhattan for the construction of Fire Station 25.
Motion to approve by Juan, second by Hillis. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote.
I was waiting in for the open of the vote.
The vote is closed.
All right, the eyes have it. Do we have any other business to come before us?
There is no other legislation.
All right, the answer being no. Does anyone have any comments or observations? The answer being no. We're adjourned. Thank you.